Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
My name is Art Whitman, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board. I'd like to call this meeting on the Shasberry Select Board to order on Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 6:31. First order of business, is there anybody that has a conflict of interest or anything shown on the agenda?
No.
Next, we have minutes from the last meeting. From Monday, March 21st, I think everybody was here. Yes. An entertaining motion to accept them is printed.
So moved.
Second.
So I'll move by Tony, second by Martha. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry it, 5-0-0. We have quite a few today. Probably the first one, the most important one is all warrant for all the stipends, which means you get paid this week. So, let's see. Check warrant number 31 for $4,050.
So moved.
Move by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry it, 5-0-0. Just put them on a pile down there.
Okay.
The next warrant is payroll warrant number 19 for a total of $31,919.89.
So moved.
So moved by Tony. Second by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is payroll warrant number 20 for a total of $26,697.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? What is this for again?
This is the VEMAs warrant, it's the retirement warrant.
Oh, retirement warrant, that's what, okay. Yep. We have a retirement warrant. Is there a number to this? Yes. Number three for $15,749.48.
So moved.
Moved by Tony. Second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I have check warrant number 30 for a total of $78,084.51.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. I will read anything over $1,000. I hope that's our last salt. $8,120 in salt. Another one for $2789. Both, GA Both Fuel, $1626. $5,573 for Henry Martin, he must have fixed all the wrong words or something.
It was pretty much a midlife overhaul, the zero turn, the Toro.
LHS Associates Incorporated, $2943.
That's ballots for the election.
The usual Sycamore Landscaping, $3315.
There's some additional on there for us to clean up after that storm. We had a lot of branches down and things in the cemeteries.
U.S. Bank, $14,675, is that?
That's the second bond payment on the garage.
On the garage, okay.
Second of the year, we should say.
Gravel, Wallingford Crestone, $1977, $2247. And Weaver, $25,488.
That's grant money, that's the, we pre-purchased the culvert for way up at the end of the hollow before it goes up anymore.
Okay. That would be, that's part of the grants.
Yeah, it's part of a grant. We're only paying 20 cents on the dollar for that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under announcements, I've got a couple, does anybody else have any?
Well, I'll have one.
I'll start. Economic Development Committee, we would like to get that going again. That was activated over 20 years ago when Stanley Tool Business was empty and there was nobody looked like was going to ever use it again. So that's when we did the, what's known as the Future of Shasberry Study, 2003, and then the Sewer Department, Sewer Study and all that sort of stuff. So we think it's about time to get it started again, so looking for volunteers that would like to be on that. This is, this is more than just a one-year thing, I think this should go on for several years. Another announcement is that at our last meeting, there was a, we voted to send a resolution about the war in Ukraine. During the discussion, it was talked about the possibility of Shasberry being a conduit for money being sent. We looked into it and we were advised very strongly against it by both our lawyers at VLCT, which is the League of Cities and Towns that we belong to, the group that we belong to, and our accountant that does our annual accounting and that sort of stuff. They said, "We can't tell you not to, but please, please stay away from it." So we are taking their advice and we've told Mr. Corman if he has some way that, or something, we will gladly put a link to him or something like that. But as far as the town accepting money, we did send the resolution in, it's all been sent.
Resolution is in mail to everyone.
Everything, that's not the problem, it's that we just can't handle the money and we aren't against it, we just can't handle it for legal and, it's just a nightmare. Okay?
Internal control is what our professional auditor was very worried about. We just can't have cash going through that's not through our budget or our fund.
Okay. Dave?
It's spring cemetery cleanup time in the town cemeteries, so the cemetery committee is asking for those who decorate any grave sites in town cemeteries to remove all the decorations by May 1st. Any decorations not removed by that date will be respectfully disposed of. And as a reminder, decorations should always be kept close to the headstones as possible so as not to hinder the graveyard maintenance people.
What was that date again?
May 1st.
May 1st.
So we ask you if you have put things out to please pick them up before May 1st. After that date, we'll have to remove them so we can start doing the maintenance.
Anybody else? Any other announcements? Anybody on Zoom?
We have the four on the screen and we have no comments.
Okay. Just spectators, okay?
Okay.
That's fine. Tricia's reporting.
Hello, how are you doing?
You got my report, right?
Yes.
Let's start with the cash flow.
Where'd it go? Oh, shoot. Wrong one. Come back to me in a minute, I gotta go back. Sorry, loaded the wrong thing.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll sort of jump to, I'll tell you what's going on with the bottom of the cash flow. I said that I was going to do this one meeting or two meetings ago because of that big flow-through grant. So you'll see that I'm doing the budget projection as though that hadn't happened. So you're going to see two sets of numbers. One of them is the official set, the other set is the more easy to understand set.
Oh, you want to deal with?
The cash flows, we could start with that one.
I don't have that one here. All right, hold on.
Sorry.
Want to talk about this one while I go with the other one?
Don't particularly, actually. Just want to put you on the spot. No, I could, if you want to bring that back, I can talk about it.
It's too late now.
Okay. Okay, so this time of year, we're going to see more money going out than coming in, but you can see there was quite a bit of delinquent taxes, that's related to the tax sale I mentioned that last time. Third revenue you can see is quite high, a lot of that is, it's dog license time. If you have not taken care of that, you should backlog and transfer station cash. So you can see that a fair amount of cash came in in March. The checks written in March, that gigantic number, that is the flow-through grant, $340,000 of that is. You see state per parcel, same amount coming in and out, the $17,252. That's money that comes directly from the state. We get $1 per parcel and that's just sort of to handle the creation of the grant list. So that's money that comes back to the town from the state, just to defrase some of the lister costs. And then we also get, I think it's $8.50 per parcel, you could do the math, I don't remember. That's, or $7.50, that's to, that's state money to fund the reappraisal when that has to happen. So that's just an annual payment. Unfortunately, when we get money from the state, it goes directly into our general fund, so you can see it coming into the general fund, and then it has to go back out again. It ends up in the reserve account. So that's why the same amount is coming in and going out again. If I could persuade them to put it in the right place in the first place, they wouldn't have to have that, the counting looking that silly, but that's what's going on there. If you want to jump down to the bottom, Dave, we can see what I was talking about before. So there you see the, it looks like our revenues and expenditures are very high, that's the flow-through grant. Up below that is the, the numbers if that had not happened. So you can see that our net revenues for the year are just above 100% of projection. That's partly because we sold something, some equipment, I don't remember what that was, Dave, but we, we had another thing that we.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm.
We talked about it at the time. And the net expenditures are running very slightly ahead of last year's budget, but last year was kind of an unusual year and we were very conservative with spending money last year because of the pandemic and we were concerned about things. So the way things look this year are actually much more normal than last year. Any questions about any of that?
We're on track for our budget, how are we on, for borrowing money?
We're going to be fine through the end of June.
Through the end of June.
We may have to borrow, I expect to borrow money this year for new people. Did we talk about this before?
I don't think so.
We, because of the big infusion of cash comes with the tax payments in November, it's completely normal to borrow money from the bank just to tide us over in the months of July and August until we get the tax bills out. It's, it's a completely normal cash flow thing just because the, the way we collect money is so very seasonal. Other towns collect taxes twice a year or four times a year to even things out a little bit more. I think for a town our size, the way we do it is correct, but we do have to, we have to borrow some money sometimes to tide us over, but it's, it's normal.
And the interest rates, historically have been very low.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know what it will be, but.
Right, it's probably going to be higher, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be enough to make it.
The risk to the bank is nothing.
Yes, okay. And also, we've been getting the, the tax bills out quite a bit earlier than in, in the last few years, we've gotten them out earlier than in the, historically. And if we get a, a grand list.
Right.
Then we'll be able to beat that. And, and so that's, that's another consideration. So I'll do the cash flow projections in July, we might decide we don't have to borrow money. That would be my preference, but if we do, it's normal.
Okay.
Anything else about the cash flow? Okay, we just take a quick look at the reserve account. You see that $17,252 down there, you're looking at the credits column. If you go just a tiny bit down, Dave, like one line, there you go. That's that, on the 290 line, that's the same money that, that I was talking about before, transferred over to here from the state to fund reappraisal when that becomes necessary. And Dave just looked into this, that if we got on the list today, we, we might be able to get reappraised in five years.
Yeah.
There's quite a backlog. And, and we were, we were talking about it, we might get out of whack and then get back into whack again. There's sort of a bubble with, with the real estate right now. I wouldn't want to assume things are going to just keep going up forever. The restoration fund transfer there, the 350 line, that's, that's the per page that, of Marlene's fees, that we transfer over to a, a permanent fund for restoring documents or, you know, making them, saving them in ways that'll last.
Like digitizing?
Yeah. Okay, various, yeah. And then just a little bit of water money. And I, I want to say something very quick about this, this is just our current, as of today, cash balance in those reserve accounts. Some of them owe a lot of money to the general fund. I will be doing a transfer to get it back where it belongs. That may not be very clear, but whenever you guys sign a warrant and I write the checks, that all comes out of the general fund, even if it really is coming out of a reserve account. So I need to do a transfer to send the money back to where, where it belongs. So it gets, like, there's some, some grant money that we have, you've, you've written some checks on some of these, and so I'm going to take care of that. The next meeting, you'll see that this number goes down quite a bit. If you could go down just a tiny bit more, Dave, we can see the bottom line there. Yeah, so we've got that $1.4 million in there. Obviously, a lot of that is the ARPA funding, but it's, there's also another couple hundred that's just basically some equipment, especially equipment is accounting for some of that. Is that clear at all? The accounting with fund accounting is very weird and that's, that's, it has to, basically it's just the budget numbers. The budget money comes out of the general fund and, but if you write checks for things that are not from that, then the money needs to go back to the general fund. Is that clear at all? Did I make it worse?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
Any questions about any of that? Or anything else?
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Sure.
Thank you.
Basically, we're at that time of year, the roads, I must say, have been very good. Usual spring potholes, but far, far fewer than in past years. I was just down West Mountain in Eclair today and it's just a few soft spots and generally, I've got to say, the roads are way, way better than they've been in a long time. So they're out grading, I believe they were on Perrin today. And that's the spring, the spring thing, putting some more gravel down the soft spots and start grading the roads and that's about what's going to occupy all their time for the next few weeks, is just getting the roads graded. I think hopefully, knock on wood, that we're done with any snow or ice or anything like that and it'll dry out hopefully soon. But like I said, considering the wetness of the winter, the roads have really held up very well. Really nice job. So many fewer potholes, you know, it's, it's really, it's really been good. And that's really, there isn't really much to say because it is just, this is just getting the roads back, spring, spring cleanup. But we do have another form, the annual financial plan for the town highways. This is just part of the annual set of forms we send into the state as we go into grant writing season. And it just breaks down a description of the town highway funds. This does not include any state funding at all, so. We budget about $1,168,000 tax dollars into the highways annually, and the state likes us to break it out into winter and non-winter maintenance. The winter maintenance always runs higher, it's kind of formulaic how you do this. So that's estimated at $642,000, where non-winter maintenance comes in at about $526,000. And like I said, this doesn't include any of the state grant money. So what I need is a motion for the town to send this annual financial plan into VTранs. And that, it basically says, "We, the legislative body of the municipality of Shasberry certify that funds raised by municipal taxes are equivalent to or greater than a sum of at least $300 per mile for each class mile of Class 1, 2, and 3 town highway in, in the municipality." And we, we far exceed $300 per mile, so.
You've heard the, the entertaining motion?
So moved.
Mike, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Tony. I will sign it. You want today's date on it or let you date it?
Uh, no, you can date that and it needs all five of your signatures as long as you're here.
What is today?
The 4th of April.
The next one is a, is another standard form, not a standard form, but a form we have to sign, Dave, that just lets us use the ARPA money for anything that is permissible, which is just about everything?
Yeah, what this is, is I have to file with the feds by the end of the month. And this is a one-time opt-in here that will, well, the motion that's recommended, and this is coming through VLCT and all our other advisors on this, that the motion would be, "I move that the town of Shasberry make the one-time irrevocable decision to elect a standard allowance approach for our ARPA award in the amount of $1.1 million to spend on the provision of government services throughout the period of performance of the grant." So that's what we, what we're proposing. And the provision of government services is the broadest category, and this means that by voting for this, we don't have to do individual structures for each thing we do. Almost everything comes under provision of governments, construction of schools, hospitals, road building, maintenance, other infrastructure, health services, general government administration, administrative facilities, environmental remediation, provision of police, fire, and other public safety services. The only real restrictions are, we can't pay into pension funds, we can't pay debt service, you know, we can't satisfy any judgments against the town, and of course, no project that conflicts with certain federal laws that we've already signed off on. So what it does is, it just allows us to spend the $1.1 million on, as VLCT says, virtually anything in, in the categories, and it's as broad as you possibly can have it.
And if we don't do that by the end of the month, then does that restrict us in some way to?
Yeah, it would, it would make every single thing being an individual application for the use of the funds.
Okay.
And, you know, realistically, our pot isn't that big. And, and almost anything I can conceive of that we would want to do, considering it says health services, general government, environmental, provision of, I mean, there's almost anything you can think of that is in this category. And it's recommended by VLCT, especially for towns like us to opt into this.
Yeah, but it would still allow us if we decided as a town to break it up into individual pieces to certain categories, it would still allow it?
The $1.1 million, I expect to be in several different pieces.
Okay, it would still, it's not one.
$1.1 isn't going to anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can think of, even on the things we've discussed, that would be in four, five, or six pieces.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Perfect, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, that's, that's a good part, which I think we'll be getting to in the next topic of, of how to allot this. But if there are questions about this, this is why they recommend that this motion just be read out tonight, no vote on it. And if you have questions, they can ask about this, so they, you know, you can go on line two to VLCT, it explains the thing that I sent around, a little background to everyone. It is what they recommend, like I said, for, especially for a town our size. Towns like Burlington obviously can't take this option. Only towns that are being funded at less than $10 million can take this option. So even if we were getting $10 million, we could opt to spend it on provision of government services, which like I said, is as broad as you can possibly make it.
Is that the clean and powerful water?
Yes, that was one of the original restricted uses was, when we first got the ARPA funding, there were three categories essentially, three main categories and a lot of minor ones, water being one of them, and that's what we were thinking of. But when they changed, when the final rule came out last month, it literally changed everything. And now it's, it's a very wide open process. It's like I said, we're getting to in the next step because it changes the way we have to look at this. So, because it has to be a broader scope thing.
Okay.
So if, like I said, this is just to be read, so you're all aware of this. I'd like this to come to a vote at the next meeting, and I'm following kind of a script for VLCT to put this out at this meeting for a vote at the second meeting, because it'll take me all five minutes to enter what I need to. And now that I only have to do this, if it's voted to do this, it's basically ticking a box because we haven't expended anything, my report, it's really for expenditures to It's really for expenditures to date. Now, some towns have already spent a lot of their money. We haven't spent any, and nor are we obligated to commit it until the end of 2024, so it's just saying, we're going to take it this way without having to get into piles of paperwork, because, like I said, for 1.1 million, we're not going to have that many. And we'll take it from there.
Okay.
So, the next, the next thing we need to talk about is the ARPA money. And we've said right along that this is the town's money, we want town input and that sort of stuff. I don't see a lot of people here talking about it. So what we would suggest is that, and this is a boilerplate type of thing?
This is again from the good people at VLCT that I was looking at on Friday, as to establish an ARPA committee to different members of the community that will begin the process of community engagement to see how people would like to see this. I mean, this is once in generational money. The money should be used wisely and with input, so for the board to try and do that while they're voting on it is, is kind of, gets to be a complicated thing. So this would establish a separate committee that would have three members appointed by the board. One would be from, from the private sector, one would be hopefully from a nonprofit sector, and the other one is kind of at large, and two ex officio members, one from the select board, one from the planning commission. They would then set up a framework to work, and a framework to, to everything, Martha had brought up, what the institute's name, just went out of my head.
Harwood.
Although, yeah.
The Harwood Institute, yeah.
Maybe that, that, this committee would look at, would say, "That's somebody we want to bring in to do this." But it would get the thing going, and would hope it wouldn't take to December 24, but it would set the framework to really discuss a community-wide to come up with, how are we going to spend this money?
Again, it, it only brings back recommendations to the select board.
Yes.
The select board has the final decision on how ARPA money is going to be spent, but at least we'll have some idea of what the public would like, okay? The, again, these people would be appointed by the select, selectmen?
Right, yeah, those three, the three folks, and then?
The three people would be appointed by the select board.
Right.
From the, and, and, you know, this is in stone, that, you know, it's, I'm following the format because I thought it was good, that there'd be one general, one from the business community, one from the nonprofit community.
Yep, that makes sense.
And I do think it's, it's, it's just my opinion, that it's right to have a representative from the planning commission and a representative from the select board.
Yeah.
And then you have your five members. Five is the number I picked. They can say you have as many. I think you picked too many, you have nowhere.
Too many cooks.
But if you have five dedicated people who are going to invite people in, because I certainly want to encourage the board in my direction of what I would like to see done, you know, because I, there's infrastructure that I think is important, but that's the thing. And that board will then come to the whole select board and say, "This is what we think." But it would generate a lot more discussion than we've gotten in the last couple of months.
Right. And so how are the select board member and planning commission member, are they appointed as well by the select board, or?
Yes.
How, okay.
Well, it'd be like, you guys decide who's your representative, and then the planning commission can make a recommendation on who they want to sit on the board.
Okay.
And you get going.
Do you think, so, all, the money has to be spent by December 31st, 2024?
Uh, by December 31st, 2026. It has to be obligated by December 20, December 31st, 2024. So we have a long time, and, you know, part of the emphasis with this was to look at the money, it's, like I said, it's a once in a generation type of funding, to look at projects and do the best for the town you can, and to use it in a way that either piggy banks onto grants you can bring in, like in just my example, like bringing this place up to code, because I could also piggyback a $75,000 accessibility grant on. So you want to use it as a force multiplier, too, and you want to make sure that you're not starting anything that's going to encumber the town down the line with more expenses. It should be kind of, use the money to get what you need and move on, but there's no rush. I mean, we only have half the money so far.
Right, exactly.
So no rush to, to spend it. The law's very clear, we have, we have four more years to spend it. We just have to confirm it by '24, which I think is, is more than generous. If we can't figure out what to do with it in another year and a half, maybe we should send it back.
We're struggling, yes.
That's kind of what I was getting, I guess, do we want to put some time points in here that's?
This has it restricted to December 24th.
Of this year.
Still, December 31st of 2024, because that's the statutory obligation. And, yeah, I mean, we can change the date to move it up, but by stat, by the ARPA law, it has to be committed by December 31st, 2024.
Right.
You can move the date up if you want, but I can't conceive of this committee wanting to talk about this for two years.
Right.
And this is just a suggestion, that we aren't?
Yeah, none of this, and this isn't really, was intended to be voted on tonight, because I only put this together on Friday, but it's to be voted on at the next meeting. We can tweak, you can tweak anything in this. This is just the outline that I tweaked from the VLCT outline to get us to a starting point.
It doesn't have to be spent all at once, it can be spent in increments?
Well, you know, when, when the final decision is, is to break up the 1.1 in five, six, 50 segments, once it's decided to break it up, everything can go to contract. I mean, you know, basically, all the money can be spent, because I think we're supposed to get the next payment in a couple of months. So at that point, it's just parked.
Okay.
So as we, you know, and parked money is losing money, because everything's going up. So that's why the terminal date of this committee is one thing, but realistically, I'm sure the committee will understand.
Yeah.
Time is money, and.
Do you want to put a date in there? Yeah, I'd like to move the date forward, just because there are some projects that have been kicked, the coal haul, the asbestos water line replacement, that we don't need another 18 months to talk about, really, I don't, so, I mean, I'd like to see this broken into like three, four pieces, rather than break this into 25 different smaller projects.
Yes.
But, I mean, that's, the committee can come up with that, but I don't, I wouldn't want to see it go all the way to December 31st.
Well, you know what would be convenient, if you wanted to move it up, would be to make it one year from today.
Okay.
Because then, I mean, ideally, it would be before, it would be December, November 30th of this year, because then anything that I had to look at for budgeting in 20, budget 24, I could put in. We could look at grants, and we'd know which direction we're going, and we could start filing paperwork, which normally has to get in at the beginning of the year. So I don't know if, November, to me, doesn't seem that quick.
So November of this year is what we're thinking, November 2022?
22.
Okay.
I, you know, now I'm just tossing it out there, but November's a better time, because like I said, the budget, if we have to tinker with something, that's the time to tinker with it. This doesn't seem too rushed, because, I mean, we have months to do this, and we do the outreach properly, we should have the input by then.
But we also need to make sure we have time to synthesize that.
Well, that's what I mean, you know, that's something that's going to have to be thought about. 23 November seems pretty far away.
True, true.
So I don't know where the balance is with that. Or you can make it.
Because to get it out in multiple ways and through all the channels that we can.
And you want to be careful, and I agree with the, one of the underlying tenets of this is to make sure you're getting public input on what you're doing with the money. We could do it for a year from now, and I could tinker with the 25, goodness, the 25 budget, because we still have the 26 to spend it, so, I mean, whatever you think is more comfortable, November, a year from now?
Well, our buying power's going to be a lot less than a year.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I also am thinking about if we're doing a mail or, or other things, that takes time to get to printing press, to get out to people, to give them enough time to come back and say, "Hey, this is what I'm thinking," or if we're going to have a public forum, or any of those things.
Yeah.
It takes time, because you have to warrant them, I'm assuming, and say, "Hey, there's going to be a public."
Well, we only have a committee, so.
Well, no, but if those things happen.
Well, yeah, we're into May, before the committee could actually have more things.
But those kinds of things take time to, you know, develop, get on board, and, and do things. I don't think it's necessarily a quick process, nor should we be necessarily quickening our haste to prevent people and citizens from having the ability to voice what they would like to see with this.
One thing that gets people in the room is a deadline, or the thought that something's happening. In my experience, if you want to get people to show up, you know, put a deadline on something, and suddenly everyone thinks it's time to.
And this committee, you know, as it sets up its platforms for responses, might be able to generate those quickly, and that's, it's, well, whatever guidelines they want to set up to.
Right.
To analyze the data and make recommendations. And, and, you know, Joe was right, we have to wait off on 7% inflation, we're losing a lot of buying power right away, and, and it's, I mean, this is always, I mean, the COVID I just bought was a lot less expensive a few months ago. And maybe things are going to flatten out, which they probably will, but everything's going to flatten out higher, you know? All, all this long-range stuff is.
I'd operate under the assumption it's going to keep going on.
Yeah, well, on a normal basis, especially in construction, you're looking at 4% to 5% annually to begin with. So when the materials start going up, it's really painful. That's part of the, well, I don't want to get into water system issues. So, I mean, that can be thought about, debated. Like I said, this is my tweak of an outline that I got from somebody else, and whatever the board wants to vote on to, for dates and things for the next time. But I think this settled, is, will help settle the issue of what we, we do with this.
I think once the committee's formed, it's going to find that, you know, a lot of the big topics have been discussed, and I think there's probably some details to be fleshed out. But I'd just be, I'd hate to open it up to another 18 months of kind of, you know, I'd like to see a date, maybe this November, and then if, if we just find we can't, I imagine the select board could extend its own date, probably, but.
It's, it's just, yeah, it's just setting up a committee, and if November turns out to be problematic, we could extend it. It might even turn out that we have two or three hard, these are, are issues we're addressing, but there's a few hundred thousand left over. Okay, well, extend the committee for a while.
Yeah.
And see, but I think there are going to be several hard issues that are going to come up that will be acceptable, and then kind of play it by year for, for the rest of it. Because it's, you can have that float date, but.
But then you get into bidding and needing contract, you know, it could.
Well, if we did this, if, if it was green-lighted by the board, say if we said the 11:30 of this year was the deadline, and it was green-lighted in December, for some of it, depending on what it was, if it's construction, if it requires engineering, it'll be by summer of '23 before we get, if we're lucky, engineering documents done. Talking about construction in '24, so you're already talking about two years of price increases.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, and, and all this stuff is slow engineers now, they're just crazy busy, and every town has a chunk of this money.
Yeah.
And a lot of it, just because of the nature of it, is going to wind up in construction, which is going to delay projects. It's going to raise prices.
So, Mike, why don't we put in there a, a date of November, with the ability to extend?
Extend, sounds good, yeah. Or even, yeah, November 1st, or October 31st, or whatever it is, and then, you know, the town can.
Extend if necessary.
Extend if necessary, but work for.
Yeah. So we'll kind of, we'll vote on this next time, and if there's any other things, get a hold of the page.
Yeah.
And if people are wanting to join or put forth their names for the board, should they plan to get the, their resume and cover letter in for the next meeting, or the meeting in May?
Once, once we approve it, if it's approved at the next meeting, then people can just start sending in their.
Their cover, or their.
Whatever, whatever it is.
Their intentions.
They can send it to me, and I'll get it around to the board, and then the board will start setting up the committee at the following meeting. And, you know, that's the other part, if, if the setup of the board is, is okay with the board, then, you know, at least two members would be pretty quick, because there's a representative ex officio member from here in the PC, so.
Right.
Those should be able to be decided on pretty quickly, and then we'll get other interested persons in for the other three, and get this thing off the ground.
Okay.
Okay. So likely, then, just thinking about things, we're not going to be able to get a committee off the ground until the end of May at the soonest, because of all of the situations that we're talking about at this moment?
Yeah, because.
So that shortens also what I'm thinking, in, in, if our end date is November.
Yeah.
We are pushing things to a really quite a tight frame, I think, for getting public interest, for kind of synthesizing all the information, for making a recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
That is, I'm aware of, that is my intention, is to make it tight and keep it moving. If the, if the town hates it, you know, we can extend that if the feedback is terrible and people want to.
Yeah. I think the initial feedback will tell you if you're on the right track.
Sure.
And, you know, we'll, we'll pick it up from, from there. But, and, and, you know, we'll leave it flexible. If it turns into, in six months or eight months, whatever that is from now, that we're in a mire of, you know, everybody wants a piece of this, and we have a hundred projects, might need more time.
Right.
But if, if we're defraying it down to a certain level, then it becomes somewhat irrelevant into what you're going to get out of it anyway, so.
So we might have an ample theater.
Joe, if you put in for the ample theater, man, I tell you, that's.
Yeah.
I knew that was going to come up.
It'll come.
I have other money for that.
So, so next, next meeting.
We'll talk about the language in this, okay?
Yep, and that, of course, we had ARPA funding, discussion of ARPA funding on the agenda, but that's, these are just our suggestions, so we'll just, we'll skip right over that for right now, and leave this up to committee, okay?
Yep.
Policy and ordinance review. This is, I think we can vote on one thing. The speed limits have got to be presented to the public for how many times?
Yeah, because the speed limit is a whole different thing. That, that's on the webpage, and I want to remind people to just check out your street on the webpage. Most, all the roads are 35, and the ones in the village, some of them are down to 25, and some of the outliers like Elm. Myers has a 30 for some reason, I don't know if that's going to stay. If you're on Myers Road, please let us know what you think of that, or if any of you remember why. Myers is the only road in town that's 30 miles an hour. And just a reminder, these are a combination of a whole bunch of ordinances, so.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All over the place.
And a lot of them are out of sequence, some go back to the 60s, some are newer. So what we'll do, after we give another two weeks, I'll have it in ordinance form, and then we'll begin the ordinance process, which will take about six weeks to go through. It has to be published, it has to be everything else, but that'll make it official. It's not like one of our regular policies, it has to be an ordinance so the troopers and the sheriffs can enforce it. So just have a look at your street, and most of them are going to stay exactly the way they are. The problem with our speed ordinances is they're in several different locations, and some are quite old.
So if, if, what we're presenting to the public is that we're going to show a list of the streets that are 25?
Mm-hmm.
And other than, other than Myers Road, which I don't, I, I don't see why we can't put it to 35, every other street and road is 35. It's just that simple. There's a 25 and a 35.
Yeah. Yeah, there are no 50s in Shaftesbury. It's just 35 and 25, and 35 is actually the state speed limit 25. You have to have, they allow you to go to, but you really need reasoning for it. And in a village, it's self-evident, I mean, you don't want people going faster than 25, which they do on a routine basis to begin with. But if you make it 35, they're going faster. Yeah, so.
So it's, it will be on the web?
It's been on the webpage since our last meeting.
Okay.
Like I said, just look for your pa, your page, your street, and we're not really proposing a change to any specific street, we're just trying to rationalize what we have in one place. It's always good to go through these things and bring them up to date. I mean, as you can tell by the copies Art has, some of these pages, we put in the book about 40 years ago, and it's just time to, to refresh it.
There is one ordinance we can do, and that is?
There was a policy that was the, the road standards policy that is totally invalid, because last week, if you remember, we agreed to.
Right.
Bill to the state standards, which we've been agreeing to for every year since I've been here, so it has. been agreeing to for every year since I've been here. So as I keep going through this book, it's time to get rid of this one. So it's just time to vote to rescind the road standards policy. Just frankly, some of the material in it isn't even right anymore. So we don't follow it anyway. So just get rid of it.
So I would entertain a motion that we no longer use the standard.
The town of Shasbury road standards policy.
Use the standard road, whatever he said.
So moved.
Because we're going gold by the states.
The state standards.
Right, which we already signed.
So, so moved.
Move by Mike.
Second. Go ahead.
Sorry, apologies.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. So Carrie, 500. We have some other business. We don't have, we have to appoint town officials or not officials, officers.
Town officers, yes.
Town officers. Some of them are employees, so they are not appointed. But other ones such as the health officer is Jackie Meyer. And so I would entertain a motion that we appoint Jackie Meyer as our town health officer.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. So Carrie, 4500. Tree warden.
Jim White.
Is Jim White, who's been tree warden for years. The tree warden's responsibilities are, have been pared down by the state so that he is only responsible for a tree that the town of Shasbury planted, believe it or not. Yes, no?
And we haven't found more of those yet.
I'm like, that would be impressive.
Oh, your Christmas tree, which someone acted on.
Probably.
Yeah.
We need a new one before Santa comes.
What that did is that cleared up a whole bunch of stuff where the town could take control of right of ways. Because up until then, we had to get the tree warden out there to cut down a tree in a right of way. And it just, it got really messy. So the state and it's, I think they did the right thing. They said a tree warden's, his responsibilities are very narrow. The town has complete control of everything within the right of way. And we're actually being told, we've got to cut down ash trees and dead trees and that sort of stuff. So.
Yeah.
Okay. So did I, I don't think I entertain a motion to appoint Jim White as tree warden.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. So Carrie, 500.
And the rest of the list is mostly fire officers, which the fire department sends to us anyway. Town agent is no longer a position in the state, so.
Deputy health officer.
We don't have one. Robin may be coming when she comes back. I'm not sure if she wants to have it. But it may be something we do in a dual purpose with Arlington because we share her responsibilities with Arlington. And the rest of our, our, here are the employees now. So we're pretty much good with that. But, you know, taking aside from, because what that does with appointments, just bring up something that I hadn't mentioned about the plantings around Coal Hall. We've decided it'd be a nice idea to have sugar maples planted around the property. So that we have some, you know, when they're planted and start maturing, it'll make a nice framework around the building. I mean, probably long after I'm gone from here, but they'll look very nice down the road. At first, we were thinking about evergreens, except for the Christmas tree.
Got to have that one back.
You know, talking with everybody in the building and, you know, a few out back here and then down along the property line there, only extending to where the fence ends here. Because until we have a final plan here, I'm going to need part of that as a bump out or potentially even a shed for the sidewalk machine because we can conduit overpowered to there so that we could even plug it in here. Because we're going to replace that, not anytime soon, but in a few years, with a more modern and nimble unit. And driving it back and forth to the garage, I don't know. We could put a nice little garage here with a little amount of salt and sand and let them operate from here. So, and hopefully sometime we'll have this parking lot paved and, you know, we won't be able to deal with that way. But just to let you know, that's kind of an aside, but we're looking at, at sugar maples, depending on what we find in the ground out here. So.
I was going to say, probably a variety of trees.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm asking people to come in and, and, you know, give their opinion on what, what could go here.
Salt shed was there and so the ground is saturated with salt. So we've got to make sure.
Nothing will grow.
Tree, well, a tree that's.
I don't know. Well, that's why I'm asking professionals because I barely know what tree from another tree. So.
Oh, dear.
Just out of, out of curiosity, is that lot back there, is, is the right of way to that lot through here?
There is no right of way to this lot. The lot, the lot is access, it actually owns the property to the east side of that house is where the whole access to that property goes.
Okay.
There's a right of way on this side of the building to the house in the back and the one right here.
Okay.
The back here is not a right of way and we're going to close that off no matter what.
Okay.
That, that's only existed because we had to get trucks into the salt shed. And I've had some neighbors actually saying, you know, closing it off would be a good idea. Because I've seen cars and trucks go around the back of this building and sometimes I think, God, I hope you stop before you make that turn there. So it'll be nice to get rid of that. But, you know, we're keeping it greening up the back, a little bit off the front. And whatever we can work for a tree lined down on the border, because no matter what, that will be treed off. And probably a fence, I want to talk to our neighbor back here, probably a fence like used to be along the back, just a six foot stockade fence that will give them back the privacy that we unfortunately cut away from them last year. And then the new trees, whatever they are, will make it a nice setting again for them. And we'll start greening this place up too. And the rest will all depend on how we do the access upgrades here. And that's down the road a little bit. Anyway, that was just an aside.
I have one piece of other business. I had several constituents come to me. I suspect probably all of you have heard, Shasbury Medical is closing. It has been an institution in our town for almost 50 years, if not 50 years. And several constituents were wondering if the town of Shasbury might provide some kind of saying goodbye or something like that, seeing that they have provided huge services to our town. So I wanted to just bring that up and, and hear what folks maybe say about that. We don't have very many businesses in town that are left. And this one's going to leave quite a big hole for a lot of our community members.
Dave Durfee.
So I was, I was talking to Dave Durfee about it this afternoon.
The, the state is, loves those type of things. You know, a resolution or something.
Or something. I don't know. Or a ribbon, I don't know. It's something that we can gather people together maybe and say thank you to the providers that are working there now and, and former providers.
We could draft a resolution.
Or something.
Resolution from the town. Thank you for the town.
But also I wonder if it's a gather, a gathering of some kind to, I think, say thank you is important. And I think a lot of townspeople would like to do that. June 30th is when they close officially. So it's not, it's, it's a ways out, but I wanted to kind of bring it up now because I really do think that it's something as our board that we should be addressing and saying thank you to all of the service that they have done over many, many years, starting with the Ferrises and, and coming forward now to Dr. David King.
Let's look into the gathering point of it because part of the problem is.
This is a hard place to gather, but maybe outdoors, you know, there are several outdoor spots or, or something maybe in the parking lot there, but something kind of official to say.
Sorry.
You know, bon voyage.
We have some time to think about it. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Martha.
Yep.
Any other business?
Yes. Just want to bring up the, this is something we've talked about before. Joe sent this to me. As you know, we're, they're going to be buying a new ATV for the fire department. What they want to do, and this is, they have all the funding for this. So they want a skid unit for the ATV. It's called a forest fighting, forest firefighting skid unit and it serves as a rescue attachment and trailer. They priced it out for the bids. The lowest one was to a Kimtech Corporation for the skid unit, $47.50. And the trailer would be $2,000 over that, which they already have a line on. The money, basically the trailer is no problem. That's a part of their budget because we agreed with that when they wanted to buy the ATV. And, and many departments have ATVs and this equipment, especially given where they have to go, open glass and burying things. So it's $47.50. What will come out is the fire department equipment budget, which they have, $32.50. And the fire warden share, which comes out of their budget, which they have, budgeted this year $1,500. So if you want the board to know that that's the direction they want to go in. And then when they get the ATV, they'll have a trailer, they'll have all the equipment and they'll be ready to go.
It's all part of the budget, doesn't it?
It's all, it's all in the budget. It's all been what's been discussed over the last year or so.
We don't have to vote on it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
They're just letting us.
Yeah, it's letting us know where they're going with it and it'll be good to go as soon as we get it. And like I said, many departments have these. It's nice to have when you need it. It's nice to have the right equipment.
Do they have like a, a litter to get? I was at a camp once where someone was pretty badly injured in a pretty remote place. And the local rescue team did have a litter that went on the back of an ATV.
Yeah. Well, I, I will check specifically on this one, but I know from, from mountain rescues that my son's been on in Arlington and the mountains up here that they have stuff to get people out. Arlington does, probably Shasbury does, I just don't know. And certainly it would be an easy attachment out to one of these because they've had to go pretty deep in for, for people.
Yeah, in our case, if they hadn't had that, I'm not sure what would have happened. But it would have been people trying to carry this person out.
A lot of times it comes that they did a very, very, very long rescue in Manchester a couple of weeks ago. And, yeah, it's a different type of rescue, that's for sure. We're going up those trails for a while.
How many, how many years ago did a state trooper die of a heart attack getting somebody out?
Yeah.
Probably 35 years ago.
Yeah, it wasn't long.
They were, they were carrying somebody out.
Oh, yeah.
State trooper had a heart attack.
Yeah. Yeah. So, that's all I have for other business.
Any other business? Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn, I guess.
So moved.
By Mike.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So Carrie.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.